Public hearing regarding a crisis responder team pilot program. First, let me read the information regarding Zoom meetings pursuant to the gubernatorial disaster proclamation and the declaration of emergency for the city of Urbana, Illinois, related to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with changes to the Open Meetings Act, Public Act PA 101-0640. It has been determined that an in-person meeting, public meeting is not proven for safe or safe at this time. Members of the public body will attend remotely using Zoom webinar. Members of the public may attend via Zoom or via meetings remotely at Urbana Public Television through Comcast Xfinity on channels six and one zero nine six, I three broadband on channel six, AT&amp;T U-verse on channel ninety-nine and streamed on the web. Public notice of, uh, notice of public hearing regarding a crisis co-responder team pilot program. Notice is hereby given that the committee of the whole of the city of Urbana, Illinois, will hold a public hearing on Monday, October fourth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM via Zoom. The public hearing will, will present and receive feedback on the city's crisis co-responder team, CCRT pilot program being implemented in partnership with Rosecrans. In two thousand and four, the Urbana Police Department began training officers to more fully equip them to handle calls for service that involved subjects experiencing a behavioral or mental health crisis. Those trained were part of the Crisis Intervention Team, or CIT. In two thousand and twenty, the department handled about eight hundred calls for service that involved a mental health component. While the department has continued to maintain its CIT program, it has become apparent that the city needs to do more. The Urbana Police Department, along with Rosecrans, is planning to implement a CCRT follow-up model to deliver linkages to services for those experiencing a behavioral or mental health crisis in Urbana. This model will combine one Urbana police officer with one Rosecrans clinician. The police officer assigned to this unit will be a behavioral health detective. That officer has received special training in addition to being a CIT officer. The CCRT will focus its efforts on providing linkages to services to affected subjects and will do so on a following basis. This team will also coordinate with the family and support systems of those subjects to provide services and guidance to them as well. We are interested in hearing from members of the public to help shape the implementation of this one-year pilot program. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Ms. Wu?
Here.
I didn't, yeah, I can hear you now. Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item is a presentation, and I think we're getting that from Chief Seraphin regarding this program.
I think the mayor is gonna start off.
Okay.
Just introduce very quickly. As you heard in the description of the program, the city of Urbana has long been involved in seeking ways to help people experiencing mental health or behavioral health crises, beginning back in two thousand and four. We recognize the need for, um, for that. And over the years, people have worked very hard to respond to the needs of the public. But as noted, we, we need to do more to better serve the people of Urbana. So I'm really proud that we have reached this moment in our community. It's not, it didn't happen overnight. This is the result of a great deal of planning. I want to recognize the efforts of Chief Bryant Seraphin, Deputy Chief Rich Searls, Deputy, their city administrator Carol Mitten, former Lieutenant Joel Sanders, who was really a leader in our community for many years in this effort, Lieutenant Coker, Officer Paige Bennett, and Carleen Cardosi from Rosecrans and her team for helping us reach this moment. I'm really proud of, of the program we've put together, and you'll be learning more about that shortly. Thank you.
And if I could just say a word before we get into the substance of it. I just want to remind everyone that the council expressed its desire through the, when we passed the budget, that, and I'm gonna quote this from the, um, from the ordinance, that no resources monetary or otherwise related to this or any part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget shall be applied to alternative, alternate response models, including co-responder models without a public hearing and consultation with the council. So that consultation took place in late July. We had Rich Searls and I met with each of the council members individually, and, and we got, um, we got, um, support from almost everyone to at least pursue this pilot program. People had desires for us to do, to go beyond this pilot and so forth. But it was on the strength of those consultations that we're moving forward. And then tonight is satisfying the, um, the council's desire that we have a public hearing before we commence the program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bryant. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. So as was read in the notice of a public hearing, Urbana began with crisis intervention team officers back in two thousand and four. And, and I think that's important because as we are in the seventeenth year of having, of having those, those officers, I, I do think that shows our willingness to, to move forward and go beyond what we had done for the first ten years of my career here, which wasn't having any CIT officers. I wanted to point out that the CIT Steering Committee has been around since October of two thousand and twelve. I wouldn't have known that except we had to ask Joel Sanders that from his home in Iowa to make sure that we knew exactly what was, uh, we got this date right. And I think that's important because that's been for nine years, almost nine years at least. We've had a multidisciplinary group of people who have met and talked about some of these issues, these mental and behavioral health crises. And I wanted to just kind of give a quick rundown to make sure that everybody understood how long and the different groups that people have had at the table. We've had law enforcement, medical personnel, local corrections people, Rosecrans, Champaign County Mental Health Board. We've had municipal representatives. We've had township representatives, state's attorney's office, the CU Autism Network, Regional Planning Commission, and then even further interested parties like Courage Connection, Salt and Light, and of course, the University of Illinois. So these, all of these entities have met and, and talked about these issues over the course of time. It was actually as, as part of this group that the One Door Concept was, was born, and I wanted to at least mention that because I know a lot of people had, had heard that. As a matter of fact, it was a multidisciplinary thing that involved all these agencies, including multiple police agencies. But Urbana was picked initially as the, the agency that was gonna pilot it. A little bit smaller, a little bit easier, perhaps to try something new. And as already been said, Lieutenant Sanders was the principal driver, and he was here, and so we were selected. But it was a big idea. They had a lot of different components involved in, in that. And indeed, when Lieutenant Sanders retired, that left a void for us. And different agencies were trying to examine different ways that they wanted to move forward in this arena. Remember, there's a national conversation going on at the same time with regards to what police do, how they do it, what should we be involved in? And so on February third, I attended a webinar Rosecrans had sponsored with Rockford and Winnebago County law enforcement officials there. You know, that night I heard about this particular model, and that is when we began to have further conversations about maybe this model, this follow-up model, teaming a Rosecrans person with a Urbana police person would be something that we could do. So we had staff conversations. In April, there were two community conversations that were hosted by Rosecrans, and Carl was a part of those, talking about what people would like to see. At, at, at the end of the day, we felt this was something that we could get accomplished, that we could afford, and that we could manage. So I just wanted to set that stage tonight. I believe Lieutenant Corey Coker and, of the Urbana Police, and Carleen Cardosi will actually provide more of, of the meat. But I just wanted again to set that historical context for you all tonight. And Lieutenant Coker, I will let you move ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Council and Mayor. A crisis co-response team exists in Winnebago County with assistance from Rosecrans. It currently is staffed with clinicians from Rosecrans and including law enforcement officers from three agencies, the Rockford Police Department, the Winnebago County Sheriff's Office in Love Park PD. And we obviously just adopted the same moniker based on the collaboration with Rosecrans. Basically, a behavioral health detective and clinician from Rosecrans would team up and provide individuals with links to various services, including mental health, substance abuse, and programs for housing if individuals are homeless. More and more agencies are implementing co-responder models to assist individuals who are in need of assistance. Currently, one in five adults in the United States experience mental illness each year. Chief touched base on this earlier. The currently, there are about twenty-seven hundred units of CIT programs in the United States. While not necessarily co-responder model, it's excellent training. It's good experience, and they are very much a precursor to a co-responder model. The Urbana Police Department currently has twenty-nine CIT certified officers on the roster. The CCRT would conduct outreach with individuals who have had contact with Urbana Police Department to inquire if they'd like to take part on a voluntary basis with the primary goal of providing services to individuals and improving community and police relations. Here are some of the benefits, including reuniting former clients of Rosecrans, as there is some overlap, uh, in speaking with clinicians, individuals they may not have had conversations with or missed appointments, we may have had, actually had com, uh, contact with. One of the more important benefits is community stabilization. Let me talk about that real quick. It's very important to help reduce jail admissions and expensive hospital, uh, hospitalizations. So the individuals accepting the assistance would be a little bit more comfortable with their own support system in, in the, in the confines of their home. The BHD detective and clinician would have the ability to spend more time with individuals to come up with a plan that suits their needs. Patrol Division currently doesn't have this luxury based on the calls for service. Some of the consumer benefit to note, after a police officer, after a patrol officer has a contact with an individual and records it as a CIT event, that report is generated, and that would be routed to the CCRT for follow-up the next day, if that's practicable, practicable. This gives the CCRT time to research previous calls of service for the individual and possibly reach out to family members regarding their history and what services they have been previously supplied. Follow-up response with the clinician and detective can take place at their home or wherever the individual was most comfortable. The detective will not be in full uniform, but still be easily identified as a police officer. And by having assessments via the follow-up model, I think that will reduce costly office visits and transportation issues as well. I selected Officer Paige Bennett as the behavioral health detective. She is a four-year veteran of the Urbana Police Department. She is CIT certified, including obtaining her Bachelor, Bachelor of Science in Social Work and Master's Social Work from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign with a concentration on mental health. She's currently assigned to Patrol Division, and she is one of our hostage and crisis negotiators. She has previous experience prior to the Urbana Police Department with crisis assessments and juvenile case management. As a crisis responder, she responded to homes in surrounding counties in a very large district to implement safety plans or other treatments such as counseling and hospitalization. And currently, she's working towards her licensed clinical social worker certification. Here I have some statistics provided by Melissa Hindrian. These are CIT contacts by month. As you can see, this is going through to September the twentieth of this year. We are currently averaging roughly just south of fifty-five contacts per month. These are natures of the incidents. These are calls for service. These are what people have called nine-one-one for in regards to some of the behavior that they witnessed on the street or in the house. But they're not limited to exact here, so it, it won't add up to a hundred percent. But because officers have the ability, if they respond to a disruptive behavior call, disorderly conduct call, and they get there and they find out it's due also to public intoxication, and they have the ability to check that as well. Here are the outcomes out of four hundred and ninety-three CIT contacts through September twentieth. Sixty-three percent were resolved at the scene by the officer. Twenty percent required in a voluntary petition, meaning we transported an individual to a medical facility so they could receive treatment. Eight percent was a referral, eight percent was on arrest, and one percent was a notice to appear. And I think if we, if implemented correctly, we'd be able to lower the arrest percentage, lower the petition percentage, and increase the referral, and also increase maybe the resolve at sea based on the situation. These are all individuals in CIT contacts for this year. There were two hundred and ninety-four individuals. These are the democra, demographics of it, of the data. Forty-nine percent black, forty-six percent white, three percent were Hispanic, and two percent were Asian. Females represented up forty-seven percent, and males fifty-three percent. This graph indicates repeat CIT individuals. So for example, if you look to your left, the individuals with five-plus CIT contacts, it's forty-seven percent, or seventy-seven individuals. These are individuals that have had contact with Champaign, Champaign County law enforcement officers, Rantoul Police, University Police, Urbana CPD, or ULI Police Department. And the red indicates individuals with less than five represent two hundred and seventeen. So the goal is to provide some attention to the seventy-seven individuals so that we can properly get some treatment, that they're be interested in doing so in order to help them manage their life and, and provide them with some services, okay? I think I'm gonna turn it over to Carleen Cardosi of the Rose, of Rosecrans. Uh, I guess, Carleen, I'll just go ahead and go through the slides for you if you want to.
That sounds great. Hi, everyone. I am Carleen. I am the regional president for Rosecrans. I oversee all of the programming that we do in the state of Illinois. A little bit about the next few slides. We did present and were approved at the National Co-Responder Conference this last year. It was the second annual one. At that conference, there's obviously the group of people who do all of the first response, and then there was a handful of us who do the follow-up model as well. I have some up-to-date numbers as we just did do our reporting to the Mental Health Board. A little bit about the onset that we did in Winnebago County. Similar to Champaign, there had been a lot of talk about the need. Nobody knew where to get funding for a program like this. This was not a program that Rosecrans was able to sustain. It is not a billable program or a program that's recognized by the state of Illinois as something that we could do and bill services. After a summer of absolute social distress and unrest, we at Rosecrans said, that's it, we're doing something, and we are giving to staff, police and sheriff did the same thing and said, this is our bottom line, we have to do something different. During that time, we did start applying for grants. It was one of those things where like, we don't want to start something and not be able to fund it long-term. So during that time, we did get funding from the Winnebago Mental Health Board to give an understanding of what that looks like. They do help with the funding on the law enforcement side, and they do fund clinicians, two clinicians, for sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. That accounted to, let's count, about three and a half million dollars. So starting a full-range co-responder program seven days a week, increasing the contact, being able to go out on more active calls is something that now the Champaign, I mean, I'm sorry, the Winnebago model is working towards. During this time period, Rosecrans also did apply for some federal grants to become a CCBHC model. During that model, which really the model is about collaboration, making sure that we are linking all services together, sort of as a hub and a system of care. When we wrote our grant for Champaign County, we did include this crisis co-response model. As Chief and Lieutenant talked about, we have all been at tables, but the funding for these programs are very hard to come by. We were lucky enough to receive this grant and funding. And so the positions at Rosecrans, some of the ability to do the data collection, the flyers, the cards, how we're gonna do the follow-up model, the starting of new programs on the Rosecrans side to ensure that we can do better, to be honest, and more efficient follow-up, has been funded through this grant. We did receive four million dollars over the next two years while we learned how to build the programming down here in Champaign to meet the need. So just a little bit so that you have the full sort of understanding of where we're at. So in the Winnebago areas, you can see from November twentieth, when our, when we started, and I'll give the most recent, as I said, which was September first, we had eleven hundred and thirty-eight dispositions. So that is actual documented calls that we went out on. During that time, seventy-five percent of them, we were able to link to services. We do have the ability to break them down. Majority of them were referred from mental health services, about twelve percent for substance abuse. The really interesting piece of this, over all of those dispositions, only twenty-one of them ended up being arrested and going to jail. We did have thirty-six people who were actually in need of medical care and were able to get the medical care they needed. And then we worked with our crisis co-response, I mean, our mobile crisis response team on doing some evaluations for those that were in risk of harming themselves or others to make sure that we could keep them safe in a hospital setting. One of the things that we have seen in this program that people have the ability to not want to do it. So out of the eleven hundred and thirty-eight, we have had a hundred and forty-seven people who have passed on any linkages to services. When I talk about lessons learned, this is a really hard one for the community when we're there offering help, finding funding for psychiatry and medication, and people do have the right to not want to do that. And so that is one of those things that we are continuing working on. So the question I'm sure that many have, and we are, have been asked a lot of time, is why follow-up? First of all, it's a starting spot. It is time to start. It is time to meet the need, as you guys were just talking about, having conversations since two thousand and four, I think they said. It's time to do something. It also represents safety. And for us to understand the community, it takes a lot of trust on the law enforcement side to want to go out with a social worker. And on the social worker side, it also is about building trust and a relationship with law enforcement as well. We have seen through this pilot program the need of the community and the response time. As I said, when we were at the national conference, some of the agencies that just do going out on the crisis said, we see the same people over and over again because nobody's out there doing follow-up. So while they might be responding to crisis, there's not a follow-up team to get that done. The other question really is, if we don't start somewhere, then how are we gonna help the citizens who continue to need the help? This, I want to just be really clear, this is a starting spot. In Winnebago, as I said, we are doing more of the calls with some of the familiar faces. As Lieutenant just said, there's seventy-seven identified people that we will start to case manage and reach out to. And now in the Winnebago area, if there is John Smith who happens to be, you know, in his front yard having a problem, they will now call the co-response team to go out and meet with John Smith. But it does take some trust in the community for us to be able to do some active calls as well. So the training that took place, our first round of training, to be honest with you, we did a lot internally, some with NAMI, some with some local agencies. But we were lucky enough to really build some relationships in Champaign County where we were able to attend the classes at the University of Illinois Police Training Institute. So the person that we hired is also a clinical licensed social worker. She came to us from a local hospital where she did crisis and really was interested in this community model. So during this time, they were able to learn de-escalation skills, how to evaluate, how to do proper documentation, because we do have sort of two different roles of documentation here. We have the mental health side, which is that Rosecrans piece and all of the HIPAA laws that go with it, and then also the law enforcement side to make sure that we're respecting all of the citizens and client rights, and then confidentiality and any ethical issues that we could get into as well. So some of the lessons that we have done since we are going on a year, which is hard to believe of this program, is to make sure that we're on the same page with all of the agencies, making sure that we know where to refer people. Is there a certain person that we can contact if we do have a crisis co-responder? What do they need for us to ensure safety and good clinical care? So these will be ongoing meetings. Currently in Winnebago, we do meet once a month with all of the community agencies just to talk about how are these systems of care going? What could we improve on? Where have we seen any maybe glitches or gaps in our system? And then how will we continue to meet those needs? Making sure that you pick the right team members. You know, people think it's gonna be maybe a walk in the park, or we joked around initially saying, you know, they think they're gonna run in with bad boys playing in the background. That's not what it really looks like all the time when you go on a mental health call. So making sure that we have people who are trained in crisis, making sure that we have people on both sides who understand where law enforcement is coming from and also where the clinician is coming from, and making sure that we have good communication of staffing up cases. So I just, I, we have been thrilled with the teamwork of Urbana Police and really the way in which they have chosen the officer has, has been really outstanding in comparison to some of the other routes that we have gone. Realizing that everyone's gonna be happy. Again, this is probably the biggest one that we hear all the time as well. Can you give us a date when you're start, when you're gonna go on active calls? You know, I don't know how many times I've been asked if I've heard of the Kahoots model. I have. It's also thirty years in the making. And so what we see now in the Kahoots model is not how the Kahoots model initially began. And so being able to explain where our starting spot is, including the community council members about where we want to go and how we're going to get there, has been a big lesson for us and, and making sure that we're communicating accurately on all of those steps. And as I said, not everyone wants help. It has been a really hard lesson. You know, there might be some community members that you can't wait for them to go out and try to link to services, but they might not choose the service. That does not mean that we will not continue to go out and help or we will not continue to go out and try and meet that need. Some of the award that we got through this grant is creating more community services where our licensed clinicians will go into the community and meet with people. We did get funding to start an assertive community team, which means that we would have a team that has substance abuse counselors, vocational counselors, a nurse, and a clinician that work sixty percent in the community. So for even those people who are like, nope, I don't trust Rosecrans, I don't trust the doctor, I don't trust the psychiatrist, we still will have the team of people that will be able to try to engage them. And then being flexible in our approach. You know, everybody is different. What you think you know, you only know for that one call or for that one client. Knowing that the pilot program that we started in Winnebago is not going to run the same way as the pilot program that we want to start in Urbana. It's a very different community with different community needs. And so what it did for us is it gave us sort of the railroad tracks or the building blocks to start, but knowing that we will be flexible in our approach, both with the community and the citizens that were going on the calls to help. And now I know that we are gonna open this up for questions that you guys might have regarding the program or the roles that law enforcement and Rosecrans will play together.
Mary Alice, sorry.
I was muted.
That's okay, no problem. Thank you very much, Carleen. I appreciate it. My, my basic question is this. Why, uh, what is the benefit to having the police and the social workers working together? So I guess my question is, have you seen a model work in which the police refer directly to a social worker rather than going out as a team?
For us, it's really been about safety because everyone calls nine-one-one, and we wouldn't know the situation that we would be going into. We, the police do refer to us for mobile crisis response. I don't know how many people are familiar with it. It used to be called SAS. So right now, if the police officers have contact with a citizen that is suicidal, homicidal, in need of an assessment, they contact us now, and we go out and do those emergency situations to help decide if hospitalization is needed or we could link them to services. We have not had, not saying that it couldn't happen, we have not had negative feedback from any of the citizens in our other pilot program with the police being involved. Honestly, they have made it sound like they have their own private police officers, which is really interesting because we have a, a larger population of some transient people. And now they call it their officer, and they call for shoes and food and all sorts of things. But what it's doing is it's not taking the time of nine-one-one, the dispatch, the cost of sending people out and sort of having this teamwork with them.
So just so I'm clear, you had mentioned that you already received kind of emergency referrals in, from Urbana?
I don't know if Corey can speak to the way in which you guys refer to mobile crisis response at this time. I know how Rosecrans receives the call. I know how Rosecrans receives the calls, but I'm not sure how.
Sure. So currently, right before I got off the road as a sergeant, if we encountered a situation where we felt we needed to contact Rosecrans, we would call Rosecrans. But sometimes it would, based on their schedule, it would depend if they got there fifteen minutes or thirty minutes and we really had to kind of juggle the situation and try to get down to the root cause of what we could do at the time. But to your, but to your question, that's typically what officers would do if no CIT officer was available or if they got to a situation where they wanted a little bit more advice.
Okay, alright. I'll let others ask questions before I ask more. Thank you. Jaya?
I want to follow up on that one first because if we're talking about a follow-up model, how does the 911 answer apply? Because you're going in after, we're not talking about like a emergent crisis situation.
Those are two different lines of service. So one line of service is mobile crisis response. And so the police would be going out to whatever that call is.
But that's not this model. That's why, why I'm asking that clarification because we're not talking about a co-responder model that's actually at the time, we're talking about a follow-up model. So I was hoping you could answer Mary Alice's question related to this model.
This model, we are doing follow-up solely based on the safety at this time for the Rosecrans staff and for law enforcement. We do not have it fully staffed or a system in place where we would be comfortable sending clients out to any, I mean, staff out to any 911 call. I think what happens is people call 911 and it is then up to the dispatcher to decide who gets called out. At this time, we don't have that software and a dispatch system that's going to be.
I understand that and I appreciate that. I guess, I, my point was, we're talking about follow-up. We're not talking about 911. So the question was, why send a police officer for follow-up? If I'm.
Because that still doesn't mean that we know what we're going to be walking into when there is a crisis that has taken place. We are following up on the 911 calls that took place. And so the model that we have chosen as the pilot program was using a law enforcement officer and a social worker to go out.
Right. So quite frankly, that's one of the reasons a lot of community members, including other mental health professionals, move on this problematic is because of assuming that the individuals they're working with are inherently dangerous. So that, that's important clarification. The other question I had is why this model for Urbana? You're talking about it in another county. What evidence do you have that it'll work here?
So I think I, Jay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Sorry, my internet's spotty.
I thought I had a little bit of locking up here or whatnot. So part of, part of what, one of the reasons why, why this particular model was because we, we had looked and had had a lot of discussions about very big programs, like, like I said, like One Door initially. Big, heavy list that we, as I watched, I wasn't actively involved in those specifically, but they were very hard to sort of get the requisite amount of people, staff, of resources, of places, different organizations. And so when we heard this, we knew that Rosecrans was the provider in our particular area. And so we reached out to them to kind of say, "Can we have some more discussion about, what are you doing there? Can we at least get something, something started?" And I'll tell with regards to the question you just asked before, because I've, I've been able to speak with a couple of different social workers, including those in, at U of I. And, and some of their, what they're trying to do. And we had talked about the idea of having police, to your point, having police go along. And is, why is this? And some, and what I heard from a couple of the social workers was indeed, they weren't, they were used to having people come to an office environment. They were used to having people come to them. And going out was slightly different. And they, at least initially, had wanted, enjoyed having the partnership. So I, I think it, it, there's an extra staffing. Again, we have one Rosecrans clinician. So we sort of double that staff with our, with our person. And, and then I think there is a component of this, so there is a bit of a safety issue with regards to going out and trying in different places and all over town. And I think it was just that, that simple.
Okay, Chris?
Thank you. Um, so this is for Lieutenant Coker and the chief. And this may be a very impractical question, but just thinking out of ideas here. Is it possible that the police officer going along with, on the call could hide their weapons more? As a way of de-escalation?
So I, I don't know that we've exactly narrowed down the exact uniform of the day. We've, I know that we had chosen what we'd call a soft uniform, where something more like a polo shirt, like I would wear with some insignia and some khakis, something more along the lines of that. I don't know. And, and with regards to the exposed versus a not exposed weapon, I, I think we like having them have the tools that they need when they need them. But, but again, that's why we're having some of this feedback tonight to kind of feel where, where are people at with regards to those issues? And what others are doing? What are they, you know, how does Winnebago County exactly dress? What are they, what are they doing? And so there's, I guess there's some room for more discussion on that.
Lieutenant Coker, do you have any thoughts about that?
No, sir. I, just like I said, I mentioned that they would be a little bit more in a softer clothes type of uniform, wouldn't look as like a patrol officer. That was going for a little bit more of a comfortability, an easy, easy way to talk to individuals who might be in crisis or who may want to receive some services.
Okay. Is this twenty-four hours?
Actually, no. The hours of work will be 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We utilize the data for calls for service that we had in, in the afternoon time, after about two or three in the afternoon, calls, CIT contacts started to have a little bit more uptick. But we also wanted to be able to maintain the ability to contact providers that provide service. So that's the reason why we chose those hours.
Thank you.
Chandra?
Okay. Um, so, so you talked about referrals. Is that a warm handoff? Are you just giving the people phone numbers when, when you're following up? And if it's a referral or a warm handoff, like is insurance needed? Are their services going to be covered? But if they don't have insurance, I'm looking at all those questions.
Like, no, it would be a warm handoff. We are not handing off a phone number. Obviously, that has not worked necessarily for some of the citizens in the past. So part of this role is doing some of the case management to make sure that we have the warm handoff. We can also help people get Medicaid if they do not have that, any type of insurance. At Rosecrans, we also concern those that have no funding, including psychiatry. We have been working also with Promise Health and their new executive director on how we can link services there as well for the physical health aspect as that plays a huge role. So our goal would be that we do warm handoffs and we continue to build the community partnership. It was hard though, to be honest with you, last spring, when we started holding these listening sessions, it was hard for people to want to say, "Yes, we will, we will take some people that might not have funding or we will take Medicaid."
Anything else, Chandra?
Um, yes. So as a follow-up to that, we have like a waitlist, very long waitlist in our community for mental health services. How are these people going to be able to slide right in? What, what's that aspect look like?
As I said, we did receive quite a bit of funding to grow our own mental health services. So right now, we have started up a community support team. We have started up an ACT team. Both of those are in the community. We have hired two more access counselors so that people have easier access to care and hired on four more mental health clinicians. While I know that does not take away all waitlists, I'm not pretending it. Oh, and a full-time psychiatrist. It will help us be able to make referrals easier and serve more.
Okay, I, I have more questions, but I'll let others.
Okay, Jaya?
Um, I think I'm supposed to let Grace go first because she hasn't asked a question?
Well, if that's what you want to do. You had your hand up first, so that's why I was.
I did, but I, I've had a chance. I've got more questions, but I love to give Grace a chance too.
Okey-dokey.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, just also wanted to start out saying thanks for the presentation and having the public hearing. I do appreciate sharing that and having a little chance for input. And I would like even more, you know, it seems like we had individual conversations, not on an open meeting. And we have this public hearing, which I think is a good, good thing. But there's also not much time to process, you know, for the public. There wasn't much information given ahead of time, even for us. It's kind of a lot to process if this is the only chance for public input. So my one question was, what is the process next? Is there an official approval process for this project, especially with that budget ordinance? So that was my one question for now.
We view that what we've done up to this point will satisfy what was in the budget ordinance. As you had indicated, we're going to be the gates that we had to go through. I think this, you know, this is a pilot. There's going to be, you know, we're interested in hearing feedback from folks. With, we are, you know, we're going to be, it's going to be, there's an organic quality to it, I would say, because we're going, as Carleen was describing, they're going to learn our community and, and they're going to learn what, what the, what the team is comfortable with. And then, you know, we'll, I expect that at some point they'll report back about the progress and we'll decide, you know, if it, if we need to adjust. But we're very interested in responding to the desires of the broader community to do something different. And the fact that Rosecrans has this grant opportunity and is a very willing partner with us is an opportunity that we just don't want to, we don't want to miss and we don't want to delay any further.
Yes, understanding that. I do think that a vote would be appropriate though. I, when we've talked about approval in the past, especially just doing the code update, I thought we made it very clear on the record that approval from council meant a vote, not talking to individual council members in a vague conversation and getting, you know, like an initial thought. I do think that a vote would mean approval in the context that we've defined in the past. So something to think about. And on the same line of thought, Chief Seraphin said that, you know, there's room for more discussion on the plan as far as like the uniform and things. So I was wondering when that further discussion and input would take place.
Those are internal discussions. Those are, those were operational decisions that will be made by the, by the subject matter experts. And we're here tonight to get people's feedback on ideas. You know, we heard from Councilmember Evans, is there some way to, to have more of a concealed weapon as opposed to a weapon that someone could see because it might be triggering? Okay, take that into consideration. I know that I've been doing a lot of reading myself. I had asked the, I had asked the chief about whether a marked car would be used or an unmarked car would be used because I've read that, that that's an issue for people because they can be, they can feel embarrassed by the fact that the police had come to their house. So they'll be using an unmarked car. So it's those kinds of things that we're interested in hearing from the public. Well, you know, and we'll, and we'll get feedback from the, from the people that get served and then take that into consideration as the, as the program grows.
Okay, Jaya?
I, I think my, my next question is, is both for, for folks from Rosecrans side and from the city's side. I am not clear how increasing police involvement is responsive to the protests that we're asking for more police accountability for last summer. So if you could explain to me how increasing police involvement is responsive to that, that request or demand for accountability and change?
We don't view this as increasing police involvement. We, we view this as an increasing provider involvement. And the provider that, who is the partner that's available to us and, and all the reading I've been doing has a partnership with police and their, and, and social workers in a whole variety of formats. But the co-responder model is pairing police and, and, you know, service providers together. And so it, people are going to be encountering the police unfortunately anyway. And the idea behind this is if you, if you go to the people who have had repeated contacts with the police and you start to connect them to services, that you will eventually minimize their contacts with the police overall. The, the referrals are to try to get them help so that they, they aren't in crisis and, and no one is calling the police. They're getting the assistance that they need. That, that's how we view it.
Diane?
To add to that, the officer who is going to be serving in the behavioral health role is a patrol officer currently. She will be reassigned to this position. So that is a reallocation of resources. She's also highly trained and educated as a social worker as well. So I think this paid Officer Bennett will be a, an excellent addition to this team. And this is a reallocation of resources, which is also what we heard a lot about last year.
Okay, Chandra?
Um, so you mentioned feedback. So what does evaluation look like? How do you get that feedback? What metrics are you looking at? What determines a successful follow-up? How many times are you following up with an individual?
Those are some of the things that we will be building based off of this community. So I can say what we're currently doing. We follow up, up to five times without any contact before we say that they, we are unable to locate them. I would be happy to send to the council, we do have door hangers that are made saying that we've come to visit you. It does say Crisis Co-Response Team. It has their cell phone number on it. It also has a list of community services that range from food pantries, domestic violence shelter, emergency numbers that could be helpful to them as well. Then with regards to the survey, we can base that off of some of the feedback from the council or the community and what they would find important for citizens to feel like they got the treatment that they needed. Both treatment linkage to services and the treatment as a human being if they came in contact with a police officer, law enforcement, Rosecrans during a crisis. Currently, that is all collected into an electronic system where we have the ability to run reports as often as we want. We had talked about it right now. We run a monthly in Winnebago. We ran them much more frequently when we started the program just so we had the ability to sort of see what the calls looked like, what was some of the demographics of who the calls, you know, who we were dealing with, how well we were linking to services. We also then did that in the community as well, making sure that they felt that we were good community partners with referring and being sort of honest about the people that we were also trying to get linked to services or housing.
You're muted.
So you, you said the reports could be monthly or more frequently in the beginning. Have you all decided how often the reports would be compiled and what the distribution of those reports would be like? Would city council be able to be updated as to how the program is going and what, you know, the successful successes are like?
Sure, I'd be happy to report back. Have you received sixty days or thirty days or sixty days of reports? That suffice?
I guess whatever would, whatever the city would decide on. You know, again, for us, it's based differently in the other area because of a funder. They want to see our numbers quite frequently to make sure that we are being wise with the financials that they've given us. So we have the ability to do thirty days, sixty days. I, we have printed our results in Winnebago, in county reports, in the newspapers, wherever people feel like they would like to see it. We are more than happy with being transparent with those.
You know, a memo once a month to council would be, I think, would be good.
Okay, we can put that down.
Okay, Grace?
Uh, thank you. I will just reiterate again that I really do think we need a vote on this to count as approval. I know that, you know, the administration might want to get it passed because they see it as a good idea and that's fine. And I don't even necessarily disagree with that. But I think we need a vote if this is going to be considered approval in lieu of the budget ordinance that's in place. So I want to reiterate that. And then my question was, if we have a system in place where police are contacting Rosecrans for real-life calls in real time, why not kind of have that system? Like, why not vamp up that system or also vamp up that one? Like, why not vamp up that system or also vamp up that one, um, in addition to or instead of the follow-up?
Well, actually, w- when we would contact Rosecrance, it would actually be very sporadic. Uh, we wouldn't necessarily need them for two or three weeks based on the calls of service that we were, uh, responding to. Uh, and maybe be that one, um, situation where an officer wasn't sure, uh, the supervisor would arrive. And then we would, uh, both make a determination to call Rosecrance. Uh, so it was really more of a sporadic, uh, uh, issue.
And so this one would be ten AM to six PM, like every day or Monday through Friday, you're saying to catch office hours, kind of?
Yeah, it'd be Monday through Friday. So basically, um, the premise of it would, if, if the night shift goes to, uh, a potential, uh, suicidal subject. Uh, and they go and, um, ultimately have to do a petition because they, they, they found that the person was harming themselves, for example. Uh, they would go to, uh, a medical facility to receive treatment. And then the CCRT team within a few days can follow up to locate where that person is to see if they had arranged for any services, service providers. Uh, to, to prolong their situation or if they may need some extra attention, uh, to go that direction.
Okay, Jaya.
I was hoping to get some clarification on why the decision to move forward with this was made rather than, um, moving forward with the analysis of public safety needs. Which is what the, the council actually allocated resources for, um, in this budget. Cause I would agree with what Grace shared, that what, that little Zoom conversation we had, I would not consider a consultation. And certainly wouldn't consider it in, in keeping, at least with the spirit, if not the actuality of what was put into the bu- budget ordinance.
Well, um, we, we differ on that then. Um, we feel that we have, that we have, um, met the spirit of what you intended. It's a non-binding section of the, of the budget ordinance. Um, we, we were trying to be respectful of your intention. Um, the co-responder model was called out specifically, um, separately. Because I think you understood that that was something that we were interested in pursuing. And, um, we're, a- as I said, we're interested in doing something rather than doing nothing. Um, because it's going to take time to have this conversation about, um, reamending public safety. So here, here we have this opportunity to do something with, um, money that is largely coming from o- other sources. Um, we're reallocating an incredibly talented, um, officer in this area to try something different. And, um, I'm sorry that you all don't, um, seem to be interested in doing that. Um, but that, that is what we intend to do.
Chandra.
Okay, so, um, you, you showed in your slides the, um, sort of demographic breakdown of the people who, um. Would fall into, you know, using this, this service or program. Um, so what, uh, demographics are important when you're approaching people? How, how cultural sensitivity can you explain to me how that would work if, you know, just if you're encountering, say, a, a black person and two. Um, you know, white people come up, it's, eh, yes, just I, I'm interested to seeing how, you know, the officer and/or the social worker have been. You know, responsibly trained in cultural sensitivity and being able to talk with people of other backgrounds.
Well, knowing Officer Bennett, uh, another, uh, training she's received at the University Police Training Institute and also in-house training as well. Uh, she's very well versed in de-escalation and non-escalation. Uh, that's proven based on her role as a crisis and hostage negotiator. Otherwise she wouldn't have that role. So she's, um, very easy, easily approachable. Uh, she's friendly and she treats people with, uh, human respect, just like everyone would want to be treated.
On the Rosecrance side, we have internal and external diversity and equity trainings that take place quarterly. It's actually a requirement for us to be able to have the money for the CCBHC grant and also through all of our accreditation. So, um, we have ongoing, like I said, both internal and external trainings that take place.
Grace.
Uh, thank you. Um, just still wanted to go back to the point. Um, I feel it's, uh, whoo. So I think this is procedural point on voting. Um, I don't appreciate having, you know, opinions put on us, you know, being sorry that we don't agree with it. Um, just because we want to follow the agreed upon procedure doesn't mean that we're against it. Um, I think that, you know, we need to let the council vote on it and not just assume our vote will be against it. Um, and for that reason, say that it's not appropriate to vote and differing that. You think you have our approval, even if, um, some of us are saying that we did not see that as giving approval. And we've had conversations on the record of precedent, doing the ordinance about what council approval and consent means. And we clarified that that meant a vote on the record, not conversations with individual council members without all the information months prior. So I think that, um, we need to have faith in that. I'm not even necessarily against this. I want more transparency and input. And I want to follow the procedures that we have in place. Um, that's not to say that I'm against the whole thing. So that's all I have to say on that. Thanks.
Mary.
Main reason we're moving forward on this is the desire to do something to better serve the public. There's no, um, additional resources required. It's a reallocation of resources. And that's exactly what the community was telling us months and months last year, particularly reallocation of police resources. There's a great need and, and we're seeing, I think, a higher stress level in this community after eighteen months of a pandemic than I've ever seen before. Just, and, and this is completely unprofessional anecdotal, but just based on the calls that are coming into my office from people needing help. Um, this is an opportunity for us to help people now. I mean, we can get this started and we will get this started this month. We can do better than we're doing. We can do more than we're doing. It's not mutually exclusive to the overall evaluation of public safety. That is a larger picture. It's a look at the big picture. But this is a, a step forward to better serving the people and, and why wouldn't we do this at this point? And, um, typically votes are taken when it requires a, um, expenditure of funds that's not budgeted. And it's, and this, this was based on, I wasn't in the conversations this summer, but I know that people genuinely believed. That, that the consultations they had with individual council members indicated you were supportive of this. And so on that basis, we went ahead with, with the planning. And we have an opportunity through the grant that Rosecrance received to, to do something better for the people of Urbana. And that's the motivation here.
Thank you. Okay, Chris.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, well, I want to point out a couple of good things that I did see in this. Um, eight percent only, only eight percent of the contacts get arrested. That's great. Um, and, you know, sixty-three percent getting solved at the scene. That's great. Um, I'm really concerned though that anybody in crisis after six PM or on the weekends are stranded. And so, um, you know, I, I, I don't know, I don't know how we resolve that. But that is a real big hole in our plan here is that when things happen after six PM or on the weekends, uh, we don't have this available. Um, you know, and I, um, you know, I'm still a little concerned about the weapons being displayed. But I, you know, that, that'll take some time to solve. But, uh, the other thing too is that we don't have a lot of places to take people. Um, you know, if, you know, somebody doesn't have a place to live or family doesn't want them there for the rest of the night. Or, uh, whatever the reason may be, you know, where does this team take people? Uh, do, you know, the hospitals, do they have room? Uh, does Rose and Crance have room in their inpatient facility? I mean, I don't know. But, uh, I think it, there are times that there's going to be need for emergency housing that night. So, who, there's some thoughts. Thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions for our presenters? Any more comments?
Maybe Carlene could, um, address some of the issues Chris raised.
I mean, I think that they're super valid. Um, you know, we, overall, the hospital doesn't want people there unless they really meet hospitalization criteria. Um, there are some, you know, we, I have our crisis residential program. It is a small amount of beds. I will be the first one to say that. Uh, there is also the homeless shelter that depending on where they're at. Um, there's also some of these community-based programs. I can speak really clearly that when we were part of the homeless coalition meeting about two weeks ago. There was talk that there are actually vouchers for people to be able to get a home. But if they are not in treatment or any services, they're not able to use that voucher, which was interesting to me. So we will now have the ability for them to be engaged in some programming and be able to get more stable housing. Um, we already have some of that, uh, in the works. But, you know, we do have to look at, you know, just not just Rosecrance, but the community as well, about where are some of these other places, uh, that people could go. Because it is a concern that if someone does not have somewhere to go, how, you know, how will, how will they remain safe? How will treatment continue to assist them?
James.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo, uh, a couple of the points that, that Chris has brought up. I, I too feel like the, the display of a weapon in an approach like this is, is not conducive to a de-escalated situation. And, and as Chris and I know over years of talking about this, this idea of wh- where do you take people? Uh, unfortunately, too frequently historically, it was the jail and, and that's, that's not the path. Um, I, I, the after-hours, the, you know, trying this as a model, um, ten to six is, is very limited. I, I hope that we get some information from it that shows if it's successful, then, you know, investing. Down a path like this would be, would make more sense for those after-hours and those weekends kind of times. But not, not without the further, um, uh, uh, project that we're going to engage in. Uh, that, that Jaya has, has advocated for. So, um, I, I do, I do understand, um, some of the current concerns I'm hearing about how we're going about this. But I, I do think it's an opportunity that will give us, um, an additional capability. And teach us something in, in the process. It's definitely not the, the final answer.
I'd like to say something. Um, I think that it's, I think that this is a, a good idea, especially for a start. And when I think of, um, the, the difference between, um. What the mental health, uh, assistance used to be before Reagan dismantled everything. Um, it, it, um, it's definitely done with more compassion, what, what you're, what you're talking about right now. And for us to, there doesn't seem to be, at least from what I've observed through the past few decades. There, there are not funds that are actually put aside for mental health purposes as if, you know, people are going to just miraculously. Know that that's, those are the services they're going to need. Um, my main question that I do have is, so I, I think this, I think this is a good start. I do agree with Chris in, in, um, you know, it's, it's, it's like if you have a crisis after six o'clock on a, on a Wednesday or a Friday. You know, you're just kind of out of luck. But, um. Uh, so I do worry too, what happens to that person when that kind of hap- when that happens? I know that right now this is what is called a pilot program. Therefore, all of these questions can't be answered right away or trying to think of what to do. But, um, I also wonder if there are any. If there are any, maybe I should just say, you know, regular citizens that would be willing in those kinds of instances. To take in somebody for a night until someone can come pick them up in the morning. Is there anyone that would be willing to do that? That, that's, um. Or, or a safe house somewhere where that, where a person can at least lay their head until the next day when someone is available. Um, that may be an idea. The other thing is, um, um. I think that when we think, I think of the fact that we absolutely have very little services like this period, if any. Um, that, you know, give this a chance and let's see what happens and get our feedback from the people that we help. Um, that's the, the target audience, the to- the target population. And getting our, our feedback from them in a six-month period time or, or so. When I, wa- is what I think would be the most helpful. Um, and information, you know, what, what do they think needs to be done? Um, the other question I have is what do you do with a person that, that, um, just refuses services? What happens to that person?
So right now we continue to try to do follow-up with them. Um, that's sort of when we put them on some of the case management teams where we might remove them from the CCRT program and place them in case management. Where case management might go onto the streets and try to find them. We also do linkage to family members. The hard part is they don't always have a family member. Um, and so then it can just be community resources and see if there's a way in which we can do that. Uh, the other, I know a goal would be through, uh, the grant that we awarded, that you would really do almost like a city staffing. So if everybody knew, you know, uh, Chief Seraphin. And he had touched nine different, uh, social service agencies and the police that we schedule a staffing. And get everyone together at the table to talk about how we can help that person. Because it's interesting, all of the linkages and dotted lines when somebody, uh, is in the community and not getting help. There often is a, quite a few people that have been involved in their care or trying to help them and making sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, with that continued follow-up service. But ultimately, it's hard. They have the right not to choose services. And that, that does become frustrating, uh, for the community, for the clinician, for the family member, for people who care about that person. Um, but then we just try to be creative and how do we continue to support?
Okay, thank you. Chandra. Sorry, Mary Alice, I get to you next.
Let Mary Alice go first.
Okay, Mary Alice.
Um, so I, I just want to say a couple of things. The first one is, is that when I had my, it ended up being a one-on-one conversation. I, I think my primary concern with this was kind of minimizing the kind of police presence. Um, and so one of the things that we talked about at the time was, you know, what kind of vehicle would they be, you know, coming up with? What, what would they be dressed as and so forth? So I'm pleased to hear that Carol said that they'll be in a, in an unmarked car. Because I think that anytime, um, you know, you're, you're put on a, a, willing to engage with people differently, depending on how they present themselves. Um, and so I think that, uh, we have to have very careful consideration of what that presentation looks like. So I'm, I am pleased to hear that that conversation is going on. Um, and the second thing I'm, I'm just sitting here trying to think, Jaya and Grace had wanted a vote. Um, and I, I can't come up with a way that that would happen. Because, uh, the only thing I can think of is a straw poll. Um, in terms of whether or not we think this is a good idea for, uh, a pilot. And I, and I can say for myself, I think that, I do think that, you know, right now, nobody's getting help. Nobody's getting followed up on. We don't have anything set up in our community for that. Um, and there are a lot of unknowns. We just don't know how successful these types of things are going to be. It could be that ten to six is fine. It could be that one to eleven is fine. We just don't have those answers right now. Um, so I, I just wanted to throw that out there because I, I do hear my colleagues saying that they want some kind of vote on this. Um, but I, I don't quite under, I can't think procedurally how that would happen other than a straw poll. So those are my comments.
Okay, Chandra.
Um, so you said this is a two-year grant. Um, when does implementation start? And what, um, what does sustainability look like after two years? If all things go well.
Right. Um, so the grant, uh, you were able to start billing the grant as of August thirty-first, uh, this year. Uh, you have to have all of the programs, um, which there are multiple, fully implemented by the end of this calendar year. Uh, for us, the way in which we will continue to find funding for a team like this is really, uh, community input. Our ability to collect data and show outcomes on reduced number of behavioral health calls. Less maybe the health, your health crisis with law enforcement, linkages to services. That's the way in which we have been able to fund it in other communities. Um, right now, I mean, I can. Right now, I mean, I can talk state of Illinois if anyone wants to hear about it. The state of Illinois is investing quite a bit of money into the 988 and the 590 grants, which is really the way in which the state wants to do crisis. We recently met with the Director of Mental Health regarding Rosecrans and crisis systems and how we can continue to get funding as being one of the largest providers in the state of Illinois. So we will continue on our end to look at ways in which we can continue to fund programs like this. Because we do feel that there are gaps in multiple communities that we are in and a needed service. So some of it will be ever-changing. This would be something I'd be more than willing to give updates to the council on if people are interested in sort of that sustainability piece, if this is something that they find is beneficial for more than just a pilot program.
Okay, one more question I have. How, how many communities is, will this program, will this just be a Vanna or will it be a county thing?
Sorry, Chief, based on the, the information that we have, we're, we're just gonna provide this with the, into the city Vanna.
Okay. And is that it? Okay, well, thank you for your, for your information and input. I really appreciate that. Next, we will move on to public input. And I hope the panelists stay on for a little while so that they can hear, at least hear the public input. Minnie Pearson, that's one of the first people. You need to unmute, Mrs. Pearson. Ms. Pearson, are you there? You need to unmute still. Hello, Ms. Pearson? Are you there? If you could unmute your phone or your computer? The little microphone at the bottom?
I got you.
Okay.
Okay, I, I wasn't actually, I wasn't actually muted. I mean, I was clicking, I have a mouse that doesn't want to obey. But I'm here to basically talk about the camera. So if I'm in the wrong meeting, I can do this later. Is this a good time to do that?
Well, we're talking about a crisis correspondent team pilot program right now. You, if you want to wait till city council, yeah, that would be the most appropriate time.
Okay, because now I'm lowering my, lowering my hand, so, and then I'm going to turn off my mouth so that I will not disturb you all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pearson. And let's see, who's next? Alan Exarod?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, start when ready. Thank you. So HB 2784. Let me double-check to make sure that I said that correctly. HB 2784. I'm amazed this didn't come up in Carol Mitten's readings. I'm amazed that Rosecrans is seemingly willing to collaborate on such a thing when they know it's against state law. Because if you know about 988, you know about the Stephen Watts Act. Stephen Watts was a resident in Chicago who was murdered by the police when they had responded to a mental health crisis. So before we get started, lest you look for loopholes, I'm going to read Section 10 of the bill, applicability, Home Rule. This act applies to every units of local government that provides or coordinates ambulance or similar emergency medical services or transportation services for individuals with emergency medical needs. A Home Rule unit may not respond to or provide services for a mental health or behavioral health emergency, or create a transportation plan or other regulation relating to provision of mental or behavioral health services in a manner inconsistent with this act. So that is to say that what this bill says, you cannot, even in a Home Rule capacity, act in violation of. So now let's go into more of the meat. What does it say? Why am I bringing this up? Well, in Section 30, someone else's microphone is on. In Section 30, subsection A, or paragraph A, let's not get into the minutia of how that's labeled. It says, "Law enforcement responsibility for providing mental and behavioral health care." And then it says, "In any area where responders are available for dispatch, law enforcement shall not be dispatched to respond to an individual requiring mental or behavioral health care unless that individual is involved in a suspected violation of the criminal laws of the state or presents a physical, threat of physical injury to self or others." This overbroad policy not only is in violation of this law, but the duration, if you want to get super nitpicky about it, actually intersects with the implementation date of this law with the statewide dispatch. But however, this law went into effect immediately. These are the rules now. I was at the bill signing. You can call Senator Scott Bennett's office. I was one of the phone calls involved in this. I have been organizing with these folks for years. So now let's talk about an alternative because y'all want to do something, right? There's something called the alt-responder model, and that's what is mandated in this act. Which is to say that instead of the city sending police alongside behavioral health, because that is actually specifically prohibited in this bill, sorry, in this law, it was passed this spring. I drove activists up from around the state to that bill signing. You can instead have Rosecrans respond first. And if they require or assess that it is necessitating police presence, then they can go. That is in compliance with the Stephen Edwards Watts Act, HB 2784. I'm amazed at how much reading you've done and you've managed to miss that. A middle schooler's book report is far better. Have a good night.
Okay. Giovanna Benedetto?
I just, I have a couple of questions on this because I, number one, let me preface this by saying that I am the parent of an adult daughter with mental health issues, revolving around severe bipolar. And she lives somewhere else now, but, you know, I've had plenty of experiences with her as an adult child living at home and dealing with the police in Urbana. And I would like to say, you know, they were always great, but a lot of times they felt like their hands were tied. This program didn't exist, well, it's done, five, six years ago. I had to stop and think how the kids were. And so what I'd like to know, and I think this is a question that, like, a lot of the people that I deal with within the community too on the other end. So what would a call look like? So let me give you a very typical example that happened in my house that I've talked with other parents in my situation happen. You know, the, the adult is in a frenzy, be it due to manias, psychosis, whatever is going on. They're threatening other people, maybe not to kill them, but just, you know, you know, I'm going to hurt you, or I'm going to lock myself in my room and never come out, which is a danger to themselves. Especially since with so many of these mental illnesses, they swing back and forth very rapidly. And in the past, obviously, you know, as the other adult in the house, we called the police for help. It's determined that they can't really do anything. And we're stuck kind of in this revolving door, especially when they're refusing treatment. The other scenario is that, you know, how, so something like this sounds like it might work. So what, this is kind of like a typical situation, you know, where they're right on that edge of officers are walking into danger, but yet as a, you know, so that's, I kind of would like to know what, what it looks like, you know, when that call is made to 911 and a scenario like that is given. So even if you want to follow up with me later on that or email it to me, I, I would just like that information. And then the other thing that I have is, this is more on, on my silver hat side, is being able to explain to this and educate the public about what this program looks like and how to use it. One thing very specifically is educating the communities, the community agencies, I'm wording this wrong. The community activists like myself that are out there, that lead organizations and that, you know, we have our boots on the ground, dealing with these and the questions that come into us. So being able to educate us so then we can educate the people that we come in contact with every day so that they, you know, become, feel safe. Because I've found over the years, we're that first line of defense. And, you know, getting them to trust police, getting them to trust counselors is tough. But if we're out there saying, this is how this works and you're not going to go to jail if you call, you know, or however that's going to work, that will go a long ways. And in making everyone safer and making this program work to the best of its ability here in Urbana.
Sorry, Sarah Nixon? It's the next person up.
Hello, City Council, Sarah Nixon here. This presentation this evening and proposal comes out of the blue with the city having done zero public outreach, totally contradicting the PR that Urbana wants and values input from residents. Thank you to the city council members who are calling out Carol Mitten for her misrepresentations and for insisting that city council approval means a vote. Four minutes of input per member of the public is nowhere near enough time. No, with no advance warning, no time to ingest and then digest the presentation that you're throwing at us. This shows not a lack of planning, but rather a policy of deliberate exclusion and an ambush of the public and the city council. I and so many others have legitimate insights and personal experiences and tremendous willingness to participate here. You have subject matter experts right here throughout the Urbana community. In response to what I saw this evening, I think bringing Rosecrans into this is truly misguided. First, and just for example, I would be very, very concerned about domestic violence situations. We know that domestic violence crisis calls are among the most volatile and potentially dangerous situations for a social worker or, I should say, an unarmed person to wade into. I know from personal experience with my abuser that alcohol abuse is frequently involved as well as suicidality. A desperate person who's facing arrest or an intervention by police can feel like they're faced with a trigger situation. With, and with the amount of illegal guns proliferating out there, I think this is a disaster waiting to happen. Officer Christopher Oberheim was ambushed and murdered earlier this year in Champaign while answering a domestic violence call. That was an experienced officer, not too far from retirement, apparently. So I don't see how it is prudent to send social workers into the fray. Yes, the community has been calling for alternatives to overpolicing minorities. We have told this administration over and over and over that we want better education for police officers and good people hired, a better culture and set of values at UPD that is domestic violence-informed, trauma-informed, racial bias-informed, gender bias-informed, and that focuses on de-escalation. Now, where is the authentic partnering with domestic violence experts? During the nine years referred to by Chief Seraphin, the Urbana Police Department has in fact displayed near total disregard for partnering with local domestic violence experts. Now, Officer Paige Bennett, on paper, sounds like a really good choice. This officer, I think, should be leading the program, should be here right now this evening, should be leading your presentation and fielding the questions. I would have liked to hear from Officer Bennett extensively this evening. And I'm sorry to say that Rosecrans, on the other hand, has a poor history of serving Urbana as is. And their own staff have taken to the internet to air complaints about working conditions and toxic employment environments. Frankly, Rosecrans' reputation stinks based on the feedback and experiences described by the staff who work there and by clients who've taken the time to leave reviews about their experiences. I have to check the clock. I have no idea how much time I have left, 33 seconds. So I will skip the reviews. There is 100 reviews submitted anonymously by Rosecrans employees. And I'd like to conclude by saying, don't partner with Rosecrans. Instead, I urge you to focus on Officer Bennett. Learn more about her career trajectory, her vision and skills. It's my understanding that she has a dual skill set, a degree in social work, and, and she's a professional police officer. That sounds genuinely promising. So why does UPD only have one Officer Bennett? I urge you to invest in many more Officer Bennetts. I believe that's a better approach. Go to the School of Social Work and start recruiting tomorrow. Thank you.
Brandy McCoy?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that, I mean, state law beholden. I'm really not sure why we're having, like, why we're at this point in the process, given that state law doesn't allow this sort of partnership between the police and mental health services. But having said, I just, you were saying that you didn't see this as increasing police involvement, but, I mean, it just is. There is more police. In front of these people who are calling 911, whether it's after the fact, there's more police. And as someone who has spoken at this council a few times about community distrust of the police, whether it's a march car or not, if, if the police blow up in front of my house, I don't feel safe. So, that's what I wanted to throw in there. Not sure why we're having this conversation even.
Okay, thank you, Brandy. Are there any other hands, any other comments? Okay, with that, and no other business for this hearing, I adjourn this meeting and we will start city council meeting directly after.